Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Planning Board on October, whoops, I'm looking at the wrong date here, October 26th, 2021, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 15th day of October 2021. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. I don't think the next part of this is applicable tonight because we've finished the public comment for this, for this application, but I'm going to read it anyway on the, in the unlikely chance that we are told that we need to open up for public comment. Members of the public may have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments would be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney? Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm here as well.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thanks. Announcements, are there any announcements from staff or members of the board? Mr. La Place?
Chair, I was just going to mention that we are in the midst of setting up this special, special meeting of the Planning Board for November 9th, to accommodate an important initiative that the town wants to support, certainly in the Planning Board will as well, I'm sure, where the Princeton University Art Museum would like to set up a temporary exhibit space in the downtown area during, in the Central Business District, during the time that the actual museum will be out, you know, will not be open because of the construction of the new facility. So they're looking at a storefront space on Wholefish Street, and they want to, they'd like to have this open for the holiday season, so there's a timely, time factor, and so we're trying to accommodate them on the 9th. So I just wanted to give everyone the heads up, we're working on that.
Okay. Um, do you want a quick show of hands of who's available to that? Would that help to speed things along, or do you want to just do a?
If anyone's not available on the 9th, would they let us know as soon as possible?
Okay. Yes, I don't think that it's crucial that, you know, every single meeting, I mean, every single member be there. I mean, hopefully, you know, knock wood and all, it will be quick work because it seems like a no-brainer, I dare say, but...
Yeah, it's a conditional use, so it's coming to the Planning Board, so we'll discuss some items, but it obviously won't involve stormwater management or anything, site issues that take a lot of time, so I think it'll be a brief review.
Okay, good, great, thank you for that. And our, we have, of course, our meeting next week, a regular meeting on November 4th, Thursday. So if there are no other announcements, not seeing any hands raised, we'll move on to the minutes. We have minutes from December 10th, 2020, it was a regular meeting. I sent a few comments, nothing substantive to, well, one that involved clarifying language, but nothing, no significant changes. To Carrie, does anybody else have comments or questions? And if not, would someone like to move the minutes? Mr. Cohen is moving them, I think.
I'll second him.
He nods. Mr. O'Donnell seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Next up, we have the continuation of an application from Princeton Eden's LLC. This is preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision at 301 North Harrison Street, block 7401, lot 1.011, file number P2121-084P/MS. And I think everybody will recall, we completed the public comment on this application toward the end of the last meeting. There were a few outstanding, a few but important outstanding issues, mostly related to the traffic analysis and report. We asked for some additional information from the applicant's traffic consultant. We received maybe yesterday and earlier today, or maybe both of them earlier today, a memo from our own traffic consultant, Heather Balgawen, and also a memo with recommended conditions from Jim Purcell and Derek Bridger. And so I think that what we want to do is pick up, obviously, where, where we left off and go over, I guess, start by asking the applicant if they have reviewed those memos as well and are in agreement about the conditions. Am I missing something? Should we be doing something else first, Mr. Regan? And Mr. Cohen?
I think that's fine. I mean, I think you summarized where, where we left off last time, and I think it probably is appropriate to go right to those review memos, because I think, you know, they address a number of the issues that were left open at the last hearing.
Okay, David Cohen?
I just wonder whether the applicant would be willing to review the changes that were made on the three site plans that they submitted, to which our consultants and our, and our staff responded, so that, I mean, they were virtually all in response to comments from the board and from the public, but I think it'd be helpful for members of the public who haven't seen those plans to hear what revisions have been made.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's exactly the right place to start. Who would like to kick that? Mr. Hoff?
Sure, Madam Chair, again, for the record, Rick Hoff here on behalf of the applicant. To Mr. Cohen's comment, be happy to go through. Madam Chair, you pointed out, we left, we got to the late hour on October 14th, and there were a couple of site plan revisions that we were talking about, that we were agreeable as the applicant, but they had not been really vetted by Mr. Purcell or Ms. Balgawen, and so the idea was, hey, let's just make sure they work, let us have a chance to digest them, and then we'll come back. And that, that's what we did in the interim period. We did submit those additional requests to Mr. Purcell's office, and your professionals were able to take a look at them. That's what generated these review letters. But let's have Mr. Cahill just, you know, bring up his screen, and we can revisit just what those revisions are to the plan, and as Madam Chair, as you indicated, they were suggested from this board that we've now incorporated into the plan, and we want to show everybody that, in fact, those suggestions do work. It's not going to be an issue of needing to rework the site plan. We can implement these things as issues of resolution compliance. We're relatively competent enough. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carrie Hill. He's been previously sworn and qualified as our civil engineer, and if he could, why don't we just walk through those changes?
Great. Thank you, Rick. I think everybody can see my screen, maybe a thumbs up to make sure I'm doing it right here. Great. For reference, since the last hearing, as Mr. Hoff mentioned, we've worked diligently with your professionals, having an onsite meeting for one of them, and preparing some exhibits to make sure that, from a safety and a, and a engineering standpoint, the changes that I'll discuss tonight will work for all. And I think we've had some really good comments, suggestions, that we went back and evaluated to make sure that, you know, we can achieve these without having any negative impact on either, from a safety circulation standpoint, and as well as stormwater management. So, looking at this exhibit, I'm going to refer to it as the Site Plan Revision Exhibit-C-01. I'm sorry for, did I lose it? Yeah, you lost, sorry. All right, so apologize, I'm looking to the right.
This was a, this was a plan that you've annotated, so we're going to mark this A5, I believe, Mr. Regan, it's the last, I've let, A4 is my last marked exhibit.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, so this is, this is A5, entitled Site Plan Revisions Exhibit-C-01, dated 10/21/21. And just for reference, north will be to the left side of the page, and you see North Harrison at the bottom. Essentially, it's the, the overall site plan that we had, and we've colorized and annotated some things for clarity for board members and their professionals. To start and highlight it, as, as you may recall, one of the items that we really focused on was trying to go, I'll use the words of others that go above and beyond in terms of reducing impervious coverage and improving stormwater management, which the areas of in green are what we've done. We've eliminated 15 parking stalls. We've come back and added a rain garden in this area, as well as a bioretention swale. With all of that, the stormwater management, again, will exceed what is required by ordinance and current regulations to, to improve the overall stormwater management of this project. The other aspect that we really spent a lot of time discussing was looking at onsite circulation, as well as primarily pedestrian and bicycle circulation. And one of the primary comments that I think we heard a lot of discussion at the last meeting was, could we make the asphalt sidewalk that is along our southern property line between the proposed Avalon Building and the residence to the south wider to accommodate both a multipurpose use of sidewalk and bicycles? And you'd heard, and we've looked at that, and we had concerns in a sense of twofold. One, the ability to continue circulation of the emergency vehicle, emergency fire trucks, if we reduce the line, the roadway width, and/or if we just widened the impact in terms of land disturbance towards the neighbors to the south, because we wanted to minimize disturbance, we wanted to minimize and maintain as much existing landscaping as possible, and come back and supplement. So I can report, the good news is, is that we did evaluate and looked at reducing the roadway width, and as you can see by my cursor here, we've reduced it to be 21 feet, allowing two-way circulation still, and we've shown your fire trucks circulate in this area to your engineer, to make sure that everything still works, and we did, and then we, we go back to the widths that we had at, on either end of the site. So in so being able to do that, we still achieved the safety as required for the emergency vehicles, and we were able to widen the sidewalk from five feet to eight feet, and not move the disturbance line closer to the residence, which therefore limits the amount of earthwork disturbance and plant material removal, existing growth removal. At the same token, really take benefit of not increasing impervious coverage in this area, because instead of having wider roadway, it's just the wider sidewalks. So we're trading where that impervious coverage is, so we still gain that benefit of reducing impervious coverage. And I think that was one of the largest topics that we had at the last meeting, and I believe your professional, professionals had a chance to look at this in advance, and are as well satisfied with this proposal from a safety standpoint. Just a couple other quick points that have been evaluated in regards to meeting with your landscape architect onsite. On October 19th, we've evaluated some additional plant material to be located within our bioretention swale, as well as adding some notes in regards to the replanting after the sidewalk along the southern property line is constructed, the land disturbance there, and resupplement that with up to 150 shrubs. And if you may recall some of the numbers before, and in the review letters, they're significantly less. We are now exceeding what was there before, and supplementing with plant material, and we will be locating them with your landscape architect in the field after we do the disturbance, so that we maximize the screening to the residence to the south. I really think that's a win-win as well. Just a couple other quick points, we, we put some definition into the bike spots in terms of the, the parking spaces for the bikes. We showed them in our table on this page, which shows full compliance. And as a last point, I believe, we had a conversation of enhancing safety of the sidewalk that connects the park over to the existing retail facility where the pizza place and the Rita's is. And what we've accommodated here is maintaining a wider sidewalk, keeping it shifted to one side, so we can also plant, but are providing a proposed handrail along that entirety, so to provide a barrier to maintain all the pedestrians, specifically children and stuff walking from the park over to the, to the retail, would be maintained inside of a safe area with the guide, with the handrail, keeping them from running out into the drive aisle. That is the summary, I believe, of the key components of the site plan additions and changes that we've had. There are some other items within your, the, your engineer's letter, that I believe, you know, were in, on the same page with numerous items on this, and I think at this point, Rick, I'd leave it to, if there's any other clarifying questions required.
Yeah, I'll, we can walk through the staff comments specifically when we get to those letters, but to Mr. Cahill's point, any questions from members of the board regarding these changes, certainly, we're here to answer.
I have a couple of quick questions. Did you discuss at all some sort of electronic interventions or whatever at the, at the crosswalk between the park and this project?
I'm not...
You know, like, like, you know, like the flashing lights that, that indicate a crosswalk, or, or lights along the road, or, or even a raised crosswalk. Feel like that, that crosswalk is gonna have a whole bunch of kids in it at times, and, and we've already talked about the importance of extra safety features, which you've done with the railing and, and all of that, which is great. I'm just wondering if, if there were any additional safety measures that were talked about?
We did, we did discuss, obviously, maintaining all the MUTCD signage for crosswalks, stop for people in crosswalks, and those signage details will be added to the plans. That's part of the discussion there. We weren't opposed to a raised crosswalk in the area there, which would, I would call it more of a, like a tabletop, so it slopes up gently and comes over. Again, I don't believe that is a concern if, to, to put in addition to the signage, if that's the board's wishes.
Okay, well, I'd like to hear what other members think, but it seems to me that it would make sense, be a good thing. And did you talk at all about an additional crosswalk outside the entrance exit on the south side of the building? Sort of mid-block, if you will?
Sure, and this is the area, I believe, you're referring to. We did talk about it internally as a team, where though it, it is, there's an access point there, the architects thought it wouldn't be the primary in and out of the building. Again, if there is, if the board had a concern with any type of safety there, additional signage, we're fine. It is in an area that I think from a, from a distance standpoint, there's clear line of sight in either direction, so I don't think it would create a concern there, but we did feel we were locating them in the areas of, of highest convenience for the residents.
Okay, well, if others feel like that should be done, I'll, I'll let them comment on it, but it seems like a, a sort of a common sense desire line kind of thing, that people will come out, you know, to, to take a walk along the periphery, or to even to go over to the park, and will want to just walk straight across the street, and maybe they'll do it with no crosswalk. Undoubtedly, they will. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to speak in favor of a raised crosswalk there. I think anything we can do to enhance safety between that little league field, it's an issue right now, and I imagine that it will be going forward. I'd like to know whether any thought was given to perhaps a rapid flashing beacon there that could be, someone could push when they're crossing to alert the cars, but certainly the raised crosswalk is a solid suggestion.
Good, thank you. Mr. McGowan?
I would support the chair's position on the raised crosswalk to, over to the park.
Okay. Good, any other questions for Mr. Cahill?
So I'm just curious why the path has like such a, at the top, I guess, the top of this page, like, has such an abrupt, sharp turn. I feel like it's kind of a weird, it also, like, it, it's nice how it, like, curves with the road. I mean, I'm, I'm really glad that that path was expanded, and it's, you know, good AP, but, you know, just, once it starts to bend on that curve, it does this kind of weird, just straight up, and then, you know, like, kind of a, almost a right turn, a right, right angle turn. I feel like it could be potentially curved a little bit better, just, you know, because probably bikers are going to be riding on it, and I feel like it's going to be a sharp turn.
Yeah, and it's a valid point. It's what is, it is the existing location, and what we're trying to do again is minimize, creating greater areas of compacted soil. So we have kept it in there, but to your point, I think making a rounder curve there, we can do it, but you'd understand trying to maintain paved surfaces in the same location as they exist today, which will promote more areas outside of that, better for recharging water into the ground. So that's kind of why, but to your point, it could be easily rounded without doing anything, and, you know, maintaining that impervious coverage.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think that it would be, it could be curved a little bit nicer, and I don't know if, you know, it's, there's going to be a lot of construction anyways, you know, maybe the, the soil can be tilted in a way that would allow for recharge, you know, wherever the existing path is.
And there's a fence along that line, which is probably another reason why we were, we're trying to make that, but I'm sure we could play with that to make it at least a smoother transition in the turn.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. I mean, I would, I'd be for that, if that can be made. Also, I'm just curious, so with the, the rain gardens on the, the bottom portion of the page, if you scroll down, could you just describe, you know, where the water is flowing into that rain garden? You know, where's it, where's it coming from?
Sure, so, great questions, and under the current grading conditions, there are some minor changes that we'd have to do right in the area around these parking stalls, where before it was really geared to run parallel to those. So we would have it enter into, on both sides, actually, small portion of the, I'll call it the ring road to the south, would be able to get into the, the rain garden, and then we would be capturing water along, that would be coming in the area, and I'll try to get a diagonal area of what's going to be graded to get into the rain garden. Everything with the, similar to the conditions that are on site, underneath of the medium, we will have some under drains and connect into the system, but the, the overall storm system, but this, the intent here is to capture an area of the parking in this, over in this area, to get into the rain garden, and that size appropriately based on the square footage that we have there.
Okay, so you're going to look at the capacity of the rain garden, and kind of judge where the water might kind of drain from one side to the other? Because I guess currently it's draining to the left of this.
It could, in, in general, the, the pattern is the high side stayed along the southern property line, it went from right to left, and we are changing that to some degree with the modifications of how the Avalon Building's coming out there. So in where we're doing this, the, I'll say, the, the south, or the, the north side of that island will have breaks to allow water in, as well as the south side of that island will have breaks coming in.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I was kind of confused, because it just seemed like that was the high point of the site, and so it just, I mean, I guess you can reroute it, but...
Right, and we'll have to, we'll have to make a high point and break it towards, towards that greens, into that island. Those details would be as a condition of the approval and, and showing the updated stormwater calc. We'll work through with Mr. Purcell on, on all those fine details.
Mr. Purcell, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, and, and actually, I think Mr. Cahill just touched on the point that they're going to work with us to determine that. We actually have concerns that, that rain garden shouldn't be there, but that the green space that he has, that he's calling lawn, would probably be a better location for a rain garden, because it's actually directly adjacent to some drainage systems that can, can be used for it. So we, we would like the Planning Board to make a condition that will work with the applicant to, to adjust this, to make it, make it work. Our concern is the viability of rain gardens and bioretention swales. So furthermore, the bioretention swell that they have across from the Walgreens, we'd like to discuss having them have actual road surface drained to that, and not necessarily the clean runoff from the roof. So if we could just be flexible, and, and just say that these areas will be green, and we'll use them for stormwater management, we would like to have the opportunity to work with them to, to have it, so that it functions properly.
Good, thank you. Thanks for raising that. That's a good condition to include.
Yeah, so I'm all for that. I just wanted to add real quickly, one other comment about kind of stormwater and green gardens. I'm, I'm curious, like, I wonder, I mean, if it would be possible to put a drain that sort of runs through the, the middle parking area, and, you know, basically utilizing all those little islands. I don't know if those are too small, but, you know, they're, they're essentially the size of like two spaces each, and, you know, I mean, it's fairly big, if you think about it. So I, I feel like maybe you could run a pipe. I don't, I'm not looking at, at the, I can't remember exactly how the, the pipes run throughout the, the parking lot, but I mean, I could imagine that, you know, you could potentially capture a decent amount of water just by, you know, utilizing those spaces, the kind of in-between, smaller in-between spaces, because, you know, that, that current area is pretty massive, actually, if you think about it. It doesn't look that big from, from this scale.
Yeah, that, maybe that, maybe that could work. So we'll, we'll ask Mr. Purcell and the applicant to sort of put that strategy into the mix when they're figuring out the, the solutions for this site. Does that, does that make sense? I, because I noticed in one of the memo, in, in the memo we got today, that the applicant still needs to satisfy the requirements for managing the 100-year storm. So there may be some, some changes even beyond what we've already discussed that need to be made, and...
No, we don't expect. We've already done that behind the scenes. There, there's not a concern, there's not a concern there. And we'll work with your landscape architect as well to, to make sure that we're not, you know, we're creating things that we're eliminating shade trees as well. So we'll work with that, with your professionals, to satisfy that.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, we have had some, we have had some discussions about the extent of the additional enhancements that this applicant can or should do, and we don't want to go too far, partly because we expect that the shopping center will be coming in with a redevelopment plan at some point, and we do not want to take away all of their opportunities to enhance their stormwater. So there's a balance that we're trying to strike with, with this additional stormwater management that they're doing, and, and leaving opportunities for future development. that they're doing and and leaving opportunities for future development.
Okay.
So we'll we're happy to work with them and do what we can. But if you can trust us to to balance everything out, I think we'll we'll have a greater project here.
Okay, good. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Mr. Chow and then Mr. Cohen.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
This is actually harkening back to a concern that was raised, I think, by a member of the public in a previous meeting. And I just wanted to revisit it momentarily. There was some concern about the regrading along the southern property line and whether it would damage the root zones of some of the existing trees in the neighboring properties themselves. There are some trees that are fairly close to the property line, and I'm not sure if somebody has looked at that. But you know, if we could get some reassurance that we're not endangering trees that are actually off the property with the regrading that's happening. I'd like to just get a a comment about that.
Certainly. And I appreciate the comment. As I mentioned, we did meet with your landscape architect last Tuesday onsite and evaluated the proposed grading. And hence why I will say we pushed or added the the all-purpose walk and bike path into the site versus towards the residence, right? And I mentioned that the the note added to the additional landscaping and when we will be installing that, and it would be after the disturbance is done. We have some notes on there to minimize the disturbance and the root ball. So we'll have a chance to after the work, I'll say the grading work is done to evaluate that to make sure that there isn't any additional or and minimization of the disturbance of the existing vegetation. And that's when afterwards we come in and replant that along there. So I think our two landscape architects, one from our team and one from your team, will have a good task at hand to do that at the right time of the project to assure both parties that what we put there will survive as well as the supplement any appropriate locations.
Okay, yeah, just just to re or clarify or reiterate, I think there's some concern about existing plantings that are not on the shopping center site but on neighboring properties. So
Yeah, and we're we're not grading within 10 feet of the property line. So with that distance and separation and the plant material that is along the property line, the goal is to maintain the stuff that's on the property line of concern. And we're we're going to be cognizant of that and being inside of that to preserve that. So with that in mind, it should prevent any concerns with things that are beyond it or further away.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dobremilsky, are you are you tuned in? I see that you're a panelist, but. Hi, Dan.
Yes, I'm here.
Can you opine briefly on that same question? Is are you satisfied that the root zones of the trees on neighboring that are, you know, closest to the lot lines on neighboring properties are are in all likelihood going to be protected?
It's it's that I can. I mean, there's there's going to be impacts on that buffer that are going to be fairly significant. And it's going to be because you're widening it, because the graded bank is occurring, because the overhead wires are moving. And I think that the grading will not impact the trees on the neighboring property. The the trees on this property, there are some sycamores or plane trees that will probably have to be removed. There's some some very nice red bud trees are going to be removed. But there's going to be pruning that will occur by the power companies for the lines as well. Some of that pruning may occur on the the trees as they come over the property line from the private properties. So there will be some significant changes from the landscape that's there now because it's it's moving closer to the residential property line. I don't think there's if you if you change the bank, I don't think it would change much in in that regard. I think it's actually the dimensions of everything, the, you know, ultimately, the fact that it's getting closer to the property line. And the power lines is a pretty significant how the the power utility determines to put those lines in, whether they're spreading or more upright in their form and how close they are to the vegetation is going to be is is going to be the factor. They are obligated to prune anything within 10 feet of the wires.
And but just to be clear, we're not proposing to relocate those poles or the utilities. And the new services will be coming off an existing pole and underground. So the what's running parallel to the the neighbors isn't being changed of what's there today. The where we bring new services in would go underground.
Okay. I'm glad to hear you say that because I didn't recall hearing that the that the that the utility lines and poles would be moving closer to the neighbors. So that's.
I thought they were. I apologize if they're not. I thought they would be moving. And I don't think it's all of the watt poles, but I thought some of the poles would have to move.
Okay.
But so I mean, ultimately, that's what we're going to have to work with to try and preserve as much as possible. That's why we why I asked for additional materials so that we could kind of patch up whatever has to be pruned.
Okay.
And to come up with something that can stay under those wires as well.
Yeah, there's there's one area of grading that may be along the base of the telephone pole, but the intent is the alignment to stay the same with that. And then you can see the proposed utility connections coming off of the location of poles that are currently there. So for both the for both the Walgreens and the Avalon Bay building, you can see where those underground communications are becoming in.
So then the wires will base the poles will be where they are that where you have to grade for the bank. They'll be in the bank. The graded bank then is what you're saying.
Correct.
They're not pushed up to the lowest the plateau.
So there there may be, I believe, there's one, maybe two poles that are impacted by grading that could may need to be reset. But the alignment of where things are is intended to stay the same so that we don't have any further disturbance elsewhere.
Okay, well, maybe that's where I was anticipating they would move them rather than reset them. So I think that's ultimately a part of, I think, an onsite construction meeting with the building company to to make everybody aware of the sensitivities there and try and minimize the impact. But I think the grading itself isn't the issue. It's potentially what the power company ought to do to the pruning, in my opinion.
Took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask if somebody representing the municipality could be there when that happens so that we can emphasize to the people with chainsaws that we want that work to be done very carefully. If there is any work to be done. Ms. Sax.
I will volunteer for that assignment.
Awesome. I can't think of anyone better. Okay. Other questions? Mr. Chow?
Yeah, I second the raised sidewalk on the crosswalk to the Grover Park. I second Zenon's comment about putting a curve on the shared use path in the southeast corner. So and then thanks, Mr. Cahill, for, you know, kind of agreeing to both of those. I do. And I do wonder if there I want to thank you, Mr. Cahill, for for really thinking through the bike path. I really appreciate it. I I do wonder, though, the the guidelines for shared use paths are 10 feet wide. And it would be great if we could get 10 feet where it fits. But I also wonder why the building pushes so far south on that on that south borderline where the the building could get elongated east-west. You would get your 21 feet. You could get 10 feet path. And then you could narrow the 30 foot width path on on the east side if the building was longer east-west. And I was wondering if that is a possibility to, you know, you maintain the square footage of the building, but you have more space on the south border for both grading, planting, and, you know, the the road surface and the shared use path. So I was wondering if you can comment on that.
I can. I'll take that one, Keith. We're we're not going to be agreeable to changing the building footprint at this point. And per the last meeting and Mr. Cahill's comments, 21 is the number for, you know, safe ingress and egress. So making eight to 10 and shrinking that that travel way is really not something we're going to be able to do. Mr. Cahill can comment on that, but we're not altering the the building footprint. We feel as if we've made, we've heard the comments, both in the members of the board as well as members of the public. We think this is an enhancement that I think all parties were looking for. And this is what we're going to go with.
Yeah, it isn't. It is better. And I was just made aware today, as Mr. Chow indicated, that the ASHTO standards and other standards for for multi-use paths recommend eight feet in only the rarest circumstances. And that the standard the standard should be minimum 10 feet. You should keep that in mind for future reference, for sure, and for elsewhere on the site. And, you know, suggest to council to keep it in mind, since they've been doing a lot of, you know, of negotiating with the various property owners and players on these on these parcels. Because they are going to get a tremendous amount of mixed use and I, you know, multipurpose use. And I think that, you know, bikes will be on the road as well as on the path. Yeah, okay. Are there other comments or questions from board members? Is it time to start going through the the memos? Let's do that. Let's look first at the at Heather's, their Balgawen's memo because she had some suggestions. Try to pull it up on my screen.
Heather is here if you want to have her summarize.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Ms. Balgawen. I see you, but you're still muted. Can you summarize the the suggestions that you made for conversations that ought to take place or potentially conditions that might make sense based on your review of the additional information provided by the applicant?
Yeah, sure, of course. Following the the last meeting, the next day I reached out to the applicant's traffic engineer directly just so we can work out my questions and concerns per the discussions at the the meeting and what they had submitted. So I had given them my list. And then they also and then they provided that their supplemental analysis based on my my comments. So my from my, I guess you're talking about my my review number two dated October 25.
Yes.
That was the more recent one. Yeah, so pretty much they had addressed all of my comments. They answered all my concerns. They provided additional analysis to account for 100% occupancy of the shopping center. They reanalyzed the driveways as well as the signalized intersection. Their data did not while they why they counted heavy vehicles that included anything from a bus to a tractor trailer. They didn't differentiate the classification of the heavy vehicle. So we weren't they're not very sure of like, you know, where the the transit is entering and where the tractor trailers are entering and exiting today. So they made some assumptions and they accounted for that in the analysis. So really, everything that I had asked them for, they provided. My my main my the my outstanding comment would really just be to monitor the signalized intersection at Valley and Harrison post post development, once, you know, everything's developed and occupied, just to make sure that there's no major queuing, there's no issues with like pedestrians that the the pedestrian signal has enough time for everyone to cross, you know, things like that. So really, that's my only outstanding issue and concern is just to, you know, keep an eye on that that signalized intersection.
Our only question with that, Madam Chair, was that applicants don't. I mean, we had to provide a traffic report indicating that based on the projected development at the time we projected, given what we know then in time, is it sufficient? And we prepared a study that indicated, yes, it is. I don't believe the board can impose upon us a continuing condition to monitor that intersection.
It would be more. It would be more. I mean, again, I, you know, I can talk to Mr. Purcell more about this. But I guess it would be more of like a a post-development study where after everything is built and constructed and 100% occupied, you, you know, recount the intersection, analyze it, you know, because, again, like the study, you know, there's a lot of assumptions made. There's, you know, there's estimations on on everything. So, you know, there are a lot of there was also a lot of credits for internalization where, you know, in when you project the trip generation, you kind of deduct trips because you're assuming that residents from the the apartment complex aren't going to, you know, during the peak hours, leave and utilize the driveway. So it's not necessarily a trip counted. They're going to go to the shopping center. So it's kind of they're just internal trips and they're not counted at the driveways. So if that's not as high as what the traffic study had estimated and accounted for, and it's less internalization, then there's more trips using the driveways. And then that level D, that level service D can go to a level service A. And then, you know, you know, that's when the traffic engineers, you you take a look at the intersection and because it's not operating efficiently. So, you know, again, you know, I we can talk to Mr. Purcell about it, how he would want to handle that. But
I I'd be happy to hear from Mr. Purcell, but we're, I mean, I've never had a situation where I've had a post-construction traffic submission or obligation because lots of things can happen that could impact that intersection from the center itself. Maybe the intensity of uses aren't or their projections aren't using the driveway as much. The reality is that intersection is controlled by Princeton. I mean, it it can make the decision to add more green time towards the center. Take away green time for the center if they find that Harrison is having queuing issues and backup issues that they want to remedy. So go ahead, Mr. LePlace.
Well, I was asking the chair, but thank you.
I know enough to stop when I see your hand and others.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. LePlace. Yeah.
Thanks. I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory that the municipality is planning to study this frontage along the shopping center, this stretch of North Harrison. So certainly with with an eye towards right now, it's sort of overbuilt as a four-lane boulevard that stops and ends north and south of the shopping center. And we're going to be looking at that and intersection analysis going up even to Turhune Road. So maybe Jim wants to elaborate on the fact that the municipality itself will be looking at this situation as well.
Yeah, and and I sort of take the the comment by Heather as to both of us. My my concern is the queuing lengths leaving the shopping center now that we've adjusted the circulation within the shopping center. And I will remind the board that you have imposed this similar condition on the university.
And I will remind the board that you have imposed this similar condition on the university.
I, I was gonna bring that up. Yes, there have been other applicants that agreed to do
I, I don't, I don't see.
After the fact, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't see that it, it's an onerous condition. It's just a matter of studying it again. Um, and possibly recommending adjustments to traffic signalization. Uh, we're not, we're not concerned that it would amount to physical changes that would be imposed upon the uh, the developer. Um, we just, we just want to build in the fact that at some point in the future um, and possibly even just during construction because the uh, we've got to pay attention to that signalized intersection. And if adjustments need to be made, uh, and it could be internal circulation adjustments. We, we need to be cognizant of the fact that during construction and after construction that, that intersection may fail. Um, at that, by the time they get through with the construction, hopefully, we've actually done our traffic calming on Harrison Street and and we won't have to worry about it. But we just want that in the record um and, and we'll look at it in the future. It, it, it's not, it shouldn't be very onerous.
Point out, Mrs. Wilson, that uh, sorry, Madam Chair, that um another, another applicant agreed to a, a post um uh, it, to a post-application traffic study, the owner of the Packet Building, when I think it was when they reached eighty-five percent of occupancy for the whole building, they agreed to restudy. So it's not, uh, it, while it might be unfamiliar to Mr. Hoff, uh, it certainly w- we can think of multiple examples where, where applicants have agreed to that. I'd all, I'd also like to um just ask uh, as part of the traffic analysis, where there was also the statement that the shopping center is ninety percent occupied. It's, again, is that did that figure come from Eden's? Was it independently verified? Um.
Came from the owner of the center.
Okay. Um, cause I've, I must admit, I haven't been it, been there in the past week. But it's, it seems to me that there were um more vacant storefronts there that could lead me to believe that it was not ninety percent um occupied. So.
Is there a, uh, okay, uh, let me ask a quick question and then, and then David, um you can speak. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, and this is, I guess, a question for Ms. Balgawen. Is there a simple or, and, and Mr. Purcell too, I guess, um. What's the um most succinct description of, of exactly what we would want counted? What kind of analysis we would want to require after this project is built and occupied? Are we looking only for, for, for traffic counts and level of service at the signalized intersection? Period, full stop, or is it something beyond that?
Um, I mean, I would recommend, you know, just what they did in this study. So you can compare apples to apples, just traffic counts um and observations, including pedestrian, you know, make sure you count the pedestrians, you count the heavy vehicles, analyze the intersection and, and um, you know, see how it's operating. So pretty much exactly what they did in this study. Um, but do it again, um, you know, post-construction.
Right. Post-construction and post um occupancy, occupancy.
Right.
I, I just.
Chair, could I ask a question? Um, so if a study like this were to be conducted, what would be the potential remedy? I mean, what is envisioned as what, what would come out of that study?
Um, yeah, I mean, I would, I would minor things, you know, just like Jim said, there's not, you're not gonna re- recommend roadway widening or, or, you know, lane configurations, but probably um traffic signal adjustments. And that could also include, you know, the pedestrian timings as well. So um, you know, adjustments to the traffic signal timings.
I, and, and they may just take the form of recommendations to the municipality as to what to do.
Yeah.
I just, to Ms. Sax's point, and I, I don't mean to interrupt this, if you're, had more questions.
No, I, I'm, I'm done.
I, I, I just don't understand, first of all, that whether an applicant agrees to a condition is a different question as to whether an applicant can be compelled to have a condition. So we're not agreeing to this condition in large part because I don't understand what it does. Um, you have an applicant here that doesn't control the use of the center. So you could have more permitted uses in the center move in, generate more traffic demand, put more demands on that signal. It would have absolutely nothing to do with the application before you, but yet you would make the obligation to monitor that on this applicant when it doesn't control the use of that intersection in its entirety. I just don't see how that's fair. Secondly, I don't see why this isn't just self-policing. If the central and/or the Avalon Bay project find that that intersection becomes problematic for their own purposes, won't they come to Princeton to ask for help? Why would they want a light that's not functioning on their own property? So why are you imposing a condition on us for something that works to our benefit and is in our own interest to police? I don't understand the point of this other than to just, and I can tell you because I've had this experience. The people on this screen, these Hollywood squares, I have no doubt would be very cooperative working with us as they often have over the course of this project. But who knows is, who's in these squares five years from now and gets a provision and an approval that says we have to do post-development studies. That, I, I've had it go up very wrong. Um, where good intentions at the outset turn into things that become not what they were intended. So.
Well, I don't think anybody is asking for like a long-term monitoring obligation. They're asking for uh, to, to repeat the same type of study after your project is built and occupied so as to understand its impact. Not to impose additional costs on you, but to understand uh, i- its impact. And your point about your, your um residence, you know, being part of a bigger picture. You know, maybe the, the uh shopping center is generating more traffic itself by then. And of course, you know, some things will be different because there will be more trucks going through that part of the center where there aren't now. But um, but, but the purpose is not some long-term endless you know, monitoring obligation. Anyway, I just wanted to clear about that. Mr. Cohen's had his hand up for for some time. And, and I hear you that you're, that you're not accepting this. I'm just wanting to be clear about what's, what we're talking about.
Wanted to make a couple of points, Mr. Hoff. Number one is that the shopping center is one of the applicants um for this application um in the, in the form of uh, being the, the landlord for Walgreens. So this is not just an Avalon uh, application. And the other comment that I wanted to make is that um you know, a property manager is not always a hundred percent aware of what traffic conditions uh exist on their property. And I think that this is a suggestion that it be in the interest of the property owner, as you say, because the property owner would want to solve any problems that do come up uh, at that intersection. It's just a way of, you know, ensuring that the needed information to make those improvements um is, is available. So I'm not, you know, this is definitely not uh, a sword I'm gonna fall on or, you know, a bridge I'm gonna burn. I'm not sure what the metaphor is, but I, I think that um, that it could be helpful to have this post-occupancy study and that it, you know, um, and then, and it'll be helpful to the, to the owner of the, of the center.
Uh, and I will remind the board that the owner of the center, there's a redevelopment process ongoing. So to the extent that there's another application for the center, they get to go through the same old checklist that we had to go through this time. And it's gonna include a traffic assessment at that light. That to me provides a better period of a snapshot for what's going on there than some arbitrary condition that says we have to do a study X amount of days after CO when we have no idea what our traffic contributes as opposed to what the overall center contributes. I just.
Well, I'm gonna push back on arbitrary because it's not arbitrary, but your point is, your point is taken, and I think this is one of those things we'll have to sort of recommend to council.
I just would like to add something, Louise, which is that we're all talking um in, about a reality that is unlikely to exist, which is that the only additional traffic would be that coming from Avalon. At the same time that Avalon is being built, there will be a hundred and thirty approximately units built on the other corner and three hundred units built uh just down from there, all of which will be using this, this same uh intersection. So I just don't know how we can separate out what would be the impact of this um this development. Um, I, I think that this is a, you know, a, a theoretical exercise that would be impossible to reach a, a, a clear conclusion. I will say that um as part of the redevelopment of the shopping center, we will be uh meeting fairly regularly with all of the partners and looking at circulation. So it's not like this is the last opportunity to monitor the situation. I'm quite sure the town will be very actively involved in monitoring this. So I mean, I, I hear what the planning board is saying, and I think it's a concern, but I think what we're asking is actually impossible given all the other development that will be happening simultaneously.
Wait, and, and Madam Chair, if I may, I, I won't fall on my sword on this one either, but I would just like to say it's not impossible because what we're actually saying is that we're relying on the applicant's presentation that the number of trips from the apartment complex is X. We just want to look and see, is it really X when everything is done? Or is it Y? And if it's Y, what do we have to do to adjust the, the traffic uh impacts? Um, we don't, we can, traffic engineers do this all the time. They can separate out the trips from additional development from some other location and, and from the same site um based on where the, the trips were, um, or, yeah, where the trips originate. Um, so I, it's not, it's not, I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to just say, we, we're not we're not gonna worry about this because as everyone says, there's a lot of development going on. There are gonna be a ton of traffic studies between now and the time this thing, this project even gets under construction. So um, we can just dispense of this whole thing since it's not amenable to everybody. So I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Mr. Oakman?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, not to, not to belabor it further, but I, it does seem like what, what, what could easily be done by, and, and maybe will be done anyway by the, 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 by Avalon would be, I mean, if the assumption is that most people are parking in the garage, like, can't they just, can't they just like count like ins, ins and outs of the garage and, and then report on that? I mean, that, that's, that's, that's effectively the number we're looking for and seems like a fairly easy thing for them to to tell us, you know, once the building opens.
Makes a lot of sense to me. What, what do you say to that, Mr. Hoff?
We've made our position clear. I mean, you don't, after subdivisions are approved, you don't ask residents to count their cars that come in and out of their driveways. I don't know why this would be different. I understand the sensitivity to this intersection. But to Ms. Sax's point and Mr. Purcell's point, my suspicion is that this intersection is one that will be studied multiple times in connection with multiple either roadway initiatives and the redevelopment of the center itself. Um, and that redevelopment may entail a reconfiguration of the entrance because of what's ultimately proposed on the site. So again, and that will factor in what's actually there by way of traffic counts. And maybe at that point in time, the Avalon project is constructed. Maybe it's not. I don't know the pace of redevelopment. I would assume that the redevelopment plan will precede that, but who knows? Further down the line, you'll obviously have a better picture of what the actual traffic is, cause you'll be closer in time to it. But I.
Yeah, I understand your, your position on the signalized intersection. I'm asking about Mr. Oakman's suggestion to, to count the to ma- to do the counts at the garage.
I, I mean, I'll just add, you know, Mr. Hoff, like I, I, I understand your point, which is that, which is that you you know, you don't wanna be held responsible for this or your client. And, and that's, that, that's, that's perfectly fine if that's your position. But all I'm saying is that, that like, I do think that if the town is actually gonna be, have to focus on this intersection, this, this, this strip of, of Harrison Road as being a functional road, when all these things are happening around it, whether it's, you know, the, the units that, that Mia mentioned, you know, your units, the, the, the shopping center redevelopment, like all these things. It, it, it's, it probably is helpful for us to know kind of what, what traffic is generated from what aspects of, of that. Because, you know, your, your units, people are coming into the shopping center to go to them. Other units, they're not. They're coming into the shopping center to shop at the shopping center. So I, I'm simply saying that that seems like an easy way to get the answer we're looking for. And it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Cohen?
Um, I'm sorry to disagree with Jeffrey, but actually what we're concerned about is the traffic at the signalized intersection and traffic in and out of the garage. Um, may be entirely contained on the site. You know, somebody might drive out of the Avalon Garage, drive down to McCaffrey's. I hope they'll walk. But um, the counting, counting at the garage is not gonna give us the information that we need relative to the problematic intersection. So.
Madam Chair, one of the concerns I have, at least from a legal perspective, is I think a point a number of people have made is that you know, we're not just, if it was just the Avalon site isolated by itself, that's one thing. But we have a, you know, a large center that already generates traffic is going to continue to generate traffic. And we're, we're talking about imposing a, a condition on an applicant who quite frankly has no control over the balance of the site. I understand that Eden's is an applicant to this. Um, but they, you know, at the end of the day, this, the application that's before the board is for Avalon residential project and for the Walgreens and to impose an obligation on even Eden's as the applicant. You know, to address potential traffic that's generated from the rest of the center. I just don't think it's appropriate.
Well, and as Jim said, the municipality is going to be um, and, and other players will be doing a lo- a lot of studies. I think we've probably flailed this particular topic for as long as it can bear. Um, Mr. Taylor?
May I ask, or may I add perhaps my own personal perspective in complex urban situations like this? It's crystal clear where you have a large, complicated project, particularly one which is in development, that there are multiple players who have an important stake in the success of the project, not only in the construction phase, but at every phase going forward as the project becomes an integrated I can, an integrated-going concern. And very much in the spirit of Mia Sax's comments, what has happened in my experience is that something called a public-private partnership has evolved among the major players because of Mr. Hoff indicates, of course, if there are problems with traffic, there is an interest in dealing with solving the problem. And so where we're probably going as a practical matter is in, into a new, if you will, but practical process of governance, which will allow all of the major players to be active participants in obviously the basics around which the success of the total venture and each of the major players depends. And clearly, from my personal, professional point of view, having driven in and out of the valley road entrance and exit for forty years, this will be a problem. And I can tell you from having multiple practical experiences, trailer trucks and sixteen wheels don't work well on the valley exit and, and, and egress. So as a practical man, yes, it's going to be a problem. But I submit that we will evolve a process of governance that will reflect the needs of all concerned and will work.
Thank you, Jeff. Well put, and exactly the partnership that we envisioned.
Yeah, that, that is a great point. And I, I guess I would just ask, um, and this was really for a future, for future conversation. and this was really for a future, for future conversation, perhaps counsel when it does get its arms around what that framework looks like. That that would be good for the board to understand. You know, when the, when the next applicant or the one after that comes in. Because it it is, it it does need to be all of a piece, and it will be a public and private partnership. Okay. Are there items in the memo from from Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger that we need to address?
Yes, Madam Chair. If I'm going to go, we'll just go to, it's the last recommended conditions of approval in Mr. Bridger and Purcell's letter. We already dealt with no issue with one, no issue with two. We already talked about three, no issue. No issue with number four. We acknowledge that there need to be an easement. We'll provide that for review on the access. So no issue with number five. We just beat to death number six and number seven. We're not agreeable to number seven on the EV charging stations. The statute with adoption is not applicable to either of these two sites. I do want to note, though, based on prior testimony, the Avalon Bay project will include twenty EV spaces. The requirement in the redevelopment plan is eight. We're exceeding that. We will be providing twenty. And as we talked about, other green initiatives may come a time where we decide on our own volition to increase that number. But at this point, we don't want to be bound by a condition that requires us to increase that number. We're exceeding the redevelopment plan. So we would object to a condition that provides compliance with the statute. With respect to the Walgreens, there will be no EV stations. Eden's acknowledges that as part of the redevelopment plan, that EV statute would be applicable at that point. So we're going to need to identify EV stations as that application moves forward. Honestly, we think that there's better opportunities at the site than this particular Walgreens for those EV stations. So it's certainly something that Eden's is thinking about with respect to future development, but not for this particular application. And the only other thing was the sewer connection fees that are calculated in the letter do acknowledge that there needs to be an adjustment based upon the affordable housing obligations associated with those fees. And we also believe that there are certain credits for the commercial component of the project that we would need to work out with staff on connection fees because you're taking existing connections, eliminating them in lieu of additional ones. But I I don't want to get into the math because I honestly don't know it, but I will work with Mr. Bridger or Mr. Purcell's office to come up with the, whatever the final calculation is on the sewer connections. But those were our responses to comments.
Any other comments or questions from from board members? And if there are no further comments or questions, I'm not seeing any hands up. Oh, Mr. Tex Arney.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand that we can't make this a condition of approval, but I I do hope that whatever agreement council determines with the the developer would potentially involve converting, or I mean, not converting, but using heat pumps as opposed to natural gas furnaces. I know that that's something that we discussed earlier. I hope that can seriously considers that and hopefully, you know, that could be part of some sort of agreement.
We are actively exploring that, Zenon, and I think we've made some progress, and I feel very optimistic about that.
Great. Thank you very much. Glad to hear.
Good. Are board members ready to act? I'm seeing a few nodding. Mr. Cohen?
I'll move that we approve the application with the conditions that have been outlined to date and any others that Mr. Reagan has in his notes that need to be added.
So the ones that we've talked about tonight, in addition to the the ones I just went over from the Purcell-Bridger memo, were the electronic signal and a raised crosswalk the garage and the park. Is that correct?
My understanding of that condition was a raised crosswalk. We we didn't agree to electric.
Oh, not sidewalk. I'm sorry, crosswalk. You did not agree to the.
We didn't want to do electric signals. We didn't think it's appropriate in that area. We'll certainly do the raised crosswalks, but the it's not a, it's not a public roadway, and we didn't feel necessarily that the electric signals would have been something that would be necessary. But we'll agree with the raised crosswalks.
And it, and by virtue of the raised crosswalk, there's additional signage of some kind? Is that? Is that correct? Mr. Cahill, did you mention something about additional signage?
Signage in accordance with the MUTCD in terms of stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk, stuff like that, warnings ahead. Yes.
Okay. Mr. La Place, did you want to say something? Okay. So it's been moved by Mr. Cohen, and was there a second?
Madam Chair, before we get to the second, just to to clarify Mr. Cohen's motion, just the the conditions as discussed here tonight, because the review letters do make reference to conditions that I think we've indicated would not be applied to the project. So just as discussed, that's the.
I think that was, that was my intent, Mr. Hoff. Yeah.
Right, okay. And Mr. Oakman, I saw you raise your hand. Did you want to second?
Yeah, I was seconding.
Okay. All right. So moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Oakman. Carrie, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Again, I just want to thank the board on behalf of the applicant. We're appreciative of the time that you guys put in, not just to this application, but we're aware of your schedule and making the accommodations here tonight was very much appreciated to get this project off the ground. And I I just be remiss to not mention that again.
And I'd like to thank the municipal staff for all their work in in hounding this down and and making sure that every, all the the Ts are dotted. So thank you very much.
Here, here.
Absolutely. Yes. Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell. I couldn't have said it better. Mr. Hoff, Mr. Cahill, thanks for getting information to us quickly. And thanks to the whole board. I think that we're done. But I'm not going to. Go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
I would offer a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.